Keep it down, please. Ladies and gentlemen, please find your seats. Folks in the balcony, please find seats. No standing in the chambers. Take any conversations outside. Good afternoon at this time. Everyone, please silence your electronic devices. We have quiet on the floor. Madam Majority Leader.
Good afternoon and welcome to the stated meeting of October 10th, 2024. I am Majority Leader Amanda Farias, and I'd like to thank you for joining us. If you would like to follow along, the agenda for today's meeting is posted on our website. On behalf of the body, I welcome the members of the public who have joined us today. During stated meetings, only members of the council may speak. Members of the public shall remain silent. If you wish to express your support of any remarks, you may make the silent approval gesture. I want to remind my colleagues that decorum is to be respected at all times. Insulting each other is not appropriate. All remarks are to be addressed to the chair, and members shall not speak unless recognized by the chair. It is essential that even if we disagree, we treat each other with respect.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Roll call?
Abreu.
Present.
Ariola.
Present.
Aviles.
Presente.
Ayala.
Here.
Banks. Botcher.
Here.
Brannon.
Here.
Brewer.
Here.
Brooks Powers.
Present.
Caban.
Present.
Carr.
Here.
De La Rosa.
Here.
Dinowitz.
Here.
Felice. Gennaro.
Here.
Gutierrez.
Presente.
Hanif.
Here.
Hanks.
Present.
Holden.
Here.
Hudson.
Present.
Joseph.
Here.
Krishnan.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Lewis.
Present.
Mar Marado.
Present.
Marte.
Here.
Mealy. Menon.
Here.
Moya.
Here.
Narcisse.
Present.
Nurse. Osay.
Present.
Palladino. Powers.
Present.
Wrestler.
Here.
Riley.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Salam.
Present.
Salamanca.
Present.
Sanchez.
Present.
Schulman.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Ung.
Present.
Vernikoff. Williams.
Present.
Juan.
Present.
Jaeger. Juang.
Here.
Borelli. Nurse. Farias.
Present.
Banks.
Present.
Speaker Adams.
Present. Thank you. We will now have today's invocation, which will be delivered by Rabbi Arye Rakoff of Congregation Nachlas Avos, which is located at 113-25 Myrtle Avenue in Queens.
Speaker Adrian Adams, Councilmember Lynn Schulman. I'm humbled by the honor you have extended to me today. To you and the honorable members of the City Council, I'd like to express on behalf of my family, congregation, and community, our thanks for the gift of living and raising our families in New York City. Its vibrancy, diversity, and commitment to be welcoming has provided us with freedoms and opportunities unimaginable to our parents and grandparents in the countries in which they were born. I understand that being a member of the council requires devotion and sacrifice. That is why I stand before you saying thank you. Thank you for your devotion. Thank you for your personal sacrifice. Thank you for giving my family and community the opportunity to live as religious Jews. There is much that will be demanded of you in the year ahead. For that, we turn to God and prayer. Heavenly Father, uphold and bless our country, the United States of America, and the great city of New York. Implant brotherly love among all the who dwell therein. Bless the constituted officers of government. Set in their hearts the wisdom, understanding, and moral fortitude to uphold peace and freedom and to create a society that lives by your words. Spread, O Lord, the sheltering tabernacle of peace over all the earth with mankind dwelling in brotherhood and tranquility. May this be thy will, and let us say amen.
Thank you. I would now ask Councilmember Lynn Schulman to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you. Rabbi Arye Rakoff is a Jewish community leader in Kew Gardens, Richmond Hill, and beyond. He is a teacher in Shavak High School for Girls, the rabbi of the synagogue congregation Nachlas Avos in Kew Gardens, which also covers Richmond Hill, and is a rabbi at Camp Sternberg, an Orthodox summer camp in upstate New York. Rabbi Rakoff is a person whose kindness permeates throughout his community. When he sees a need, he is the first to take responsibility and help. In Camp Sternberg, Rabbi Rakoff has spent the past 14 years overseeing all aspects of the campus, taking a hands-on approach to all that needs to be done on the camp's campus. Rabbi Rakoff is someone who rolls up his sleeves and does all that he can to take care of his community and those around him and beyond. I would like to thank Rabbi Rakoff for being here today, and I now make a motion for unanimous consent to spread the invocation and fall upon the record.
We will now have the adoption of minutes by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez.
I move that the minutes of the stated meeting of September 26, 2024, be adopted as printed.
Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
M74, Commissioner of Elections Appointment.
Rules, privileges, and elections?
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
None.
We will now have communication from Speaker Adrian Adams.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, everyone. On Monday, we remember the victims and survivors of the October 7th attacks on Israel by Hamas. The horrific events of that day and those that followed have brought immense pain and grief that continues to reverberate throughout our communities here in New York City. The cycles of violence inflicted on families threaten to leave behind trauma that will be felt for generations. I mourn with those who lost loved ones and whose lives have been forever altered. In this moment, we must continue to recognize our shared humanity and insist that peace is possible and to work to achieve the collective security it can bring that all people deserve. October 5th was World Teachers' Day. Teachers are some of the most important figures in our children's lives, responsible for their education and development. Their contributions to our society are vast, and we must continue to support this critical workforce with the resources they need. Tomorrow, our Jewish communities will observe the start of Yom Kippur, the holiest day of the year. I hope that everyone who observes has a meaningful and reflective holiday. For all those celebrating Sukkot next week, I wish you a Haag Sukkot Sameach, Eric Dinowitz. October 11th is National Coming Out Day, which was first observed in 1988 in support of our LGBTQIA+ communities. It celebrates coming out as an act of liberation that confronts silence and ignorance and combats homophobia. Visibility is critical, and that's why we stand with our LGBTQIA+ communities. October 12th is Dacshin, one of the most cherished religious festivals in Nepal and celebrated by Hindus all over the world. Last week, we hosted a wonderful Dacshin celebration right here in the chambers, bringing together families and communities from across the city. October 14th is Indigenous Peoples' Day, when we recognize the culture, knowledge, and contributions that indigenous people have made throughout history and continue to do today. On this day, we also celebrate our city's Italian communities and their contributions. Earlier this week, the council hosted its annual Italian Heritage Month celebration right here in council chambers. Thank you to everyone who participated, and thank you to our Italian-American communities for feeding me all these many, many years with the most delicious cuisine. Okay, I, I, okay. This week, the council also hosted a Hispanic Heritage Month celebration in the People's House. Thank you to my colleagues and our staff for making these events a great success. And October 17th is Spirit Day, which is the largest campaign in the world to spread awareness about the bullying and harassment faced by LGBTQIA+ youth. We stand with you today and always. Finally, I want to wish a happy birthday to Councilmember Julie Menon, whose birthday was on the 6th. Councilmember Bob Holden, whose birthday is on the 12th. And Councilmember Justin Brannon, who will be celebrating his birthday on the 14th.
General.
Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following finance items. A transparency resolution approving new designations and changes of certain organizations receiving funding in the expense budget. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon establishing a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for one building in Councilmember Carr's district. Next, we'll vote on the following land use items. South Jamaica Gateway rezoning. An HPDE application to facilitate the development of two mixed-use residential and community facility buildings with approximately 143 senior and affordability housing units in my district and Councilmember Williams' district. MHANY, Multi-Family Preservation Loan Program, will facilitate the preservation of affordable housing across four city-owned buildings in the districts of Councilmembers Joseph, Lewis, and Narcisse. The rehabilitation of these buildings will preserve 12 rental units and one commercial space under the HPD Multi-Family Preservation Loan Program. South Bushwick Neighborhood Homes will facilitate the creation of new affordable homeownership units on city-owned sites in Councilmembers Gutierrez and Nurses Districts under the HPD Open Door Program. 31-1712th Street rezoning will facilitate a new five-story residential building with 35 housing units, nine of which will be permanently affordable units under MIH in Councilmember Caban's district. The council will modify this application to add the MIH Deep Affordability Option. 343 West 47th Street Special Demolition Permit will allow the demolition of a portion of the residential floor area of an existing building in Councilmember Botcher's district. This permit request comes after approved partial demolitions in 2019 and 2020. Two applications in Councilmember Brannon's district. 250 86th Street rezoning will facilitate the legalization of a two-story mixed-use building with medical offices and residential space. The council will modify this application to change the proposed R6B to an R5D and modify the rezoning area boundaries. Coney Island Phase 3 will facilitate the construction of a mixed-use building with 420 affordable housing units, as well as commercial and community facility space. Rents will be affordable to families at incomes ranging from 30% to 90% of the area median income. At least 15% of units will be reserved for referred formerly homeless tenants who will pay 30% of their income as rent. Two landmarks preservation designations. The Brooklyn Edison Building in Councilmember Wrestler's District, the original headquarters of our city's leading electricity company, serving Brooklyn from the late 19th century through the mid 20th century, was built in the Renaissance Revival style and housed a lighting and telephone system. The building was home to a variety of businesses since the Brooklyn Edison Company merged with Con Edison in 1943. Today, it is used as an office building with commercial space. And the One Wall Street Banking Room Interior in Councilmember Marte's district was completed in 1931 and is decorated in the Art Deco style. Designed by architects Ralph Walker and Perry Koch Smith and muralist Hildreth Meyer, the banking room features intricate mosaics and a 30-foot-high ceiling. The interior banking room will soon be converted for retail use for a department store. Today, we will also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 956C, sponsored by Councilmember Carlina Rivera, would update the technical requirements for artwork on sidewalk sheds and construction fences. Thank you to our staff members Yasmeen Nichols, Taylor Zalone, Austin Malone, Jose Conde, and Andrew Born. Next, we will vote on three bills sponsored by Councilmember Julie Wong, Chair of the Committee on Contracts, to increase efficiency and transparency in the city's contracting and procurement processes. Introduction 801A would require city agencies to provide contractors with a written explanation when denying approval of a subcontractor upon the contractor's request. Introduction 802A would require the city's chief procurement officer to establish guidelines for a standard insurance policy for all food procurement vendors. Introduction 803A would provide vendors with a formal mechanism to challenge procurement decisions, requiring the Procurement Policy Board to establish rules for such challenges. Thank you to our staff members Alex Polanoff and Alex Yablon. The next set of bills we will vote on are related to maternal health. Yesterday, I delivered an emergency speech to convey the urgency necessary for our city to confront maternal mortality. The continued deaths and their severe racial disparities are a continued injustice that we cannot allow to persist. In New York City, Black women are six times more likely than our white counterparts to die due to pregnancy-related causes. As a society, we've accepted maternal mortality as an unfortunate casualty when, in fact, most deaths could have been prevented. New Yorkers are looking to us for leadership. While we recognize that progress has been made because of advocates, members of this Women Majority Council, city agencies, the state, and others, we must also be honest that there are limitations to solving this issue solely through new laws alone. As a society and a city, we must reject acceptance of maternal mortality and some of the issues that perpetuate it. That's why I raised the alarm and level of urgency and announced that the council will help convene all stakeholders from the city, state, and federal government, as well as the brilliant minds in our public and private hospital systems, university medical schools, community-based organizations, healthcare providers, labor unions, advocates, and survivors, with a goal of creating the political will for coordinated action on solutions to end maternal mortality. The maternal health crisis is a public health emergency, and I will consistently use my voice as speaker to keep it at the forefront of our city's agenda. We have the talent, resources, and tools to change the trajectory of maternal mortality in our city. No one should die from preventable causes, and we owe it to our mothers, without whom there is no life, to work together and get this right. At the same time, the council will continue with oversight and lawmaking where we can to make a difference. At our last stated meeting, the council passed a legislative package addressing maternal mental health in recognition that it is one of the greatest causes of maternal mortality. Today, we are continuing this work by voting on bills to strengthen support for those who can become pregnant. Resolution 293A, sponsored by Councilmember Althea Stevens, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the Chisholm Chance Act, which would establish a plan to address the severe maternal morbidity crisis in Brooklyn and the Bronx. Resolution 133A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would call on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation to increase Medicaid reimbursement to cover eight pre- and postnatal visits, as well as delivery support by doulas. We thank our staff member Kristi Dwyer. Introduction 891A, sponsored by Councilmember Farah Lewis, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to annually post information related to the Maternal Mortality and Morbidity Review Committee on its website. Introduction 892A, also sponsored by Councilmember Lewis, would require employers to distribute their written lactation room accommodation policy to an employee when they are hired and post the policy in their workplace and on their Intranet if one exists. And Introduction 912B, sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, would require DOHMH to develop and distribute parenting resource materials to parents and guardians of newborn children. We thank our staff member Sahar Mozami. Thank you for your attention. Now I turn it back over to our Majority Leader.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. We will now move into discussion of general orders, and I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Lewis, followed by Juan, then Gutierrez.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader, and good afternoon, colleagues. Today, our body will be voting on two vital pieces of legislation, Intro 891 and Intro 892, to address critical issues surrounding maternal health and workplace accommodations for new mothers. The tragic trends of maternal mortality and morbidity, which disproportionately affect the Black and Brown women in our city, demand accountability and action. Intro 891 mandates that the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene annually publishes the names and titles of members of Maternal Mortality and Morbidity Review Committee. This is an essential step toward addressing systemic inequities and holding our city accountable for their well-being of its mothers. Intro 892 focuses on workplace equity, requiring employers to provide written policies on lactation room accommodations at the same time of hiring and making them accessible at all workplaces, ensuring new mothers are provided with necessary accommodations without facing undue barriers. I also want to highlight today's vote on LU 175 and accompanying Reso 612, authorizing the Urban Development Action Area Project for properties in my district to be managed by Manny Management. While my vote is yes today, I am confident of Manny's ability to develop and maintain permanent affordable housing in my district. We do not have the same sentiment for HPD. However, HPD has an obligation to be a consistent partner with the City Council when navigating any challenges throughout the project and to support the constituents of District 45 during the application process. Anything less would be unacceptable. I thank Speaker Adams for her leadership, and Committee Council Sahar Mozami and Legislative Analyst Kristi Dwyer for their support on the maternal health bills. I encourage my colleagues to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, recognizing Councilmember Juan, followed by Gutierrez.
Thank you so much, Majority Leader Farias. Today, I urge my colleagues to vote aye on 802, 801, and 803. Right now, our city is in a crisis, where we have seen more than $13 million in question of corrupt contracting that have been steered the wrong way by former Deputy Mayor Phil Banks and many others. And what we are doing today is just to step in the right direction to make sure that we have accountability, transparency, and due process to ensure that our taxpayer dollars were more than 20% of our city's budget annually. That's more than $20 billion that is at risk of corrupt uses. So what 801 and 803 do is they are bringing much-needed accountability and transparency by protecting whistleblowers and allowing people to have a voice, by allowing them to have explanations for subcontractor denials and city contracting. At the current moment, without this bill, people are denied subcontractors without any explanation, and it can be redirected, as well as 803, which amends the city charter in relation to protesting agency procurement decisions. So now, we are able to protest agency decisions on why a contract was denied for somebody else or was given or awarded to somebody. And we want to thank the local laborers 1010 for their tireless advocacy and for pushing for 803, as well as our nonprofit partners who also helped us craft 801 and 802. 802 allows us to amend the administrative code in the city of New York in relation to establishing standard insurance policies for food procurement vendors. We have heard over and over again since the migrant crisis has started that there is an immense amount of food waste in our city. And this bill will allow us to partner better with local restaurants, mom-and-pop shops, to ensure that they can compete with large-scale vendors who are catering but not culturally sensitive food or religiously appropriate food. So I urge you to vote with me. I thank Local 1010, our nonprofit partners, as well as a heartfelt thanks to Isaac Blazenstein, my former legislative director, and Gregory Castoria, my former legislative and budget fellow, who worked tirelessly on these bills. And thank you to Alex Yablon, Alex Polanoff, and my chief of staff, Nick Guloda. And congratulations to Neely Vera Martinez, my new legislative director. Thank you.
Thank you, recognizing Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm proud to pass the Newborn Navigator Act, a vital piece of legislation that will help ensure that new parents and guardians in New York City have the essential resources they need during one of the most critical times in their lives, or the fourth trimester. We cannot afford to let more parents and infants fall through the cracks because of bureaucracy or outdated systems. The data is clear. Maternal mortality is a crisis, and far too many tragedies occur in the first six weeks postpartum when parents are at their most vulnerable. This is about saving lives. Inspired by my district director Angelica Colon, who is here today, who faced these challenges firsthand, the bill is a common-sense, tech-driven solution. As she shared, leaving the hospital as a second-time mom, she did not have the resources she needed despite her years of experience working in city government. And that is just unacceptable. Through this legislation, we will leverage technology to make accessing resources as easy as a few clicks, and we bring in the massive infrastructure of nonprofits that are doing this work with compassion and efficiency. The Department of Health will develop comprehensive materials and a user-friendly online platform to connect new parents with crucial support, not just from the government, but from the vast network of nonprofits doing this work, covering everything from child safety information to mental health services. The Newborn Navigator Act is an investment in our families and our future. It's affordable, it's practical, and it's exactly the kind of investment we should be making without delay. I want to thank Brooklyn Borough President Antonio Reynoso for his partnership in this work and for his dedication to reducing maternal mortality. This is just one of the many steps we are taking to support the well-being of New Yorkers, particularly our most vulnerable. And I want to thank Speaker Adams, Chair Lewis, and once again, just want to shout out Angelica Colon, who's been working tirelessly for our district for many years, and this is very personal, and I'm very proud of her. And thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, report of special committees.
None.
Reports of standing committees.
Report of the Committee on Contracts, Intros 801A, 802A, and 803A, subcontractor and procurement vendors.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Finance, Pre-Considered Reso 597, Organization Funding.
Coupled on general orders.
Pre-considered LU 173 and Reso 604, Tax Exemption.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Housing and Buildings, Intro 956C, Building Codes.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, LU 130 and Reso 605, and LU 148 and Reso 606, Landmark Designations.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 149 through LU 152, 135th Street rezoning.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Section 197 of the New York City Charter.
LU 153 and Reso 607, 343 West 47th Street demolition.
Coupled on general orders.
Coupled on general orders.
LU 158 and Reso 608 through LU 160 and Reso 610, South Jamaica Gateway, Rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered LU 174 and Reso 611 and Preconsidered LU 175 and Reso 612, MHA NY, Multi-Family Preservation Loan Program.
Coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered LU 176 and Reso 613 and Preconsidered LU 177 and Reso 614, Coney Island Phase Three.
Coupled on general orders.
Preconsidered LU 178 and Reso 615 through Preconsidered LU 180 and Reso 617, South Bushwick Neighborhood Homes.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity, Intro 891A, Maternal Mortality Review Committee.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 892, Lactation Room Policies.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Intro 912B, Parenting Resource Materials.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
General Orders Calendar. LU 138 and Reso 618 through LU 140 and Reso 620, Various Rezonings.
Coupled on general orders.
Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders. I now ask of the Clerk, take a roll call vote on all of the items coupled on today's General Orders Calendar.
Holden.
Aye.
Abreu.
Aye.
Ariola.
Aye on all.
Abilis.
Aye.
Ayala.
Aye.
Banks.
Aye.
Bacher.
Aye.
Brannan.
Aye.
Brewer.
Yes.
Brooks Powers.
Aye.
Thank you. Caban.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
De La Rosa.
Aye.
Dinowitz.
Aye.
Feliz.
Aye.
Gennaro.
Aye.
Gutierrez.
Aye.
Hanif.
Aye.
Hanks.
Aye.
Hudson.
Aye.
Joseph.
Aye.
Krishnan.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Mamarato.
Aye.
Marte.
Aye.
Mealy. Menon.
Aye.
Moya.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Narcisse.
Aye.
Nurse.
I vote aye.
Ose.
Aye.
Palladino.
Aye.
Powers.
Aye.
Wrestler.
Aye.
Thank you. Riley.
Aye.
Rivera.
Aye.
Salam.
I vote aye.
Salamanca.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Schulman.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Ung.
Aye.
Vernikov.
Aye.
Williams.
I vote aye.
One.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye on all with the exception of Intro 956.
Thank you. Juang.
Aye.
Borelli.
Aye on all.
Farias.
I vote aye on all.
Speaker Adams.
I vote aye. All items on today's General Order Calendar are adopted by a vote of 50 in the affirmative, zero in the negative and zero abstentions, with the exception of Intro 956-C, which was adopted by a vote of 49 in the affirmative, one in the negative and zero abstentions. Introduction and reading of bills.
All bills have been referred to committee as indicated on today's agenda.
Thank you. We will now move into the discussion of resolutions and I'd like to recognize Councilmember Stevens.
Good afternoon. As a mom, I know the firsthand importance of ensuring that our healthcare system prioritizes the safety and well-being of Black women and birthing people. Reso 293 will call upon the New York State Legislature to pass and Governor to sign S. 32A, 754, the Shirley Chisholm-Chance Act, which establishes a plan to address the severe mortality crisis in Brooklyn and the Bronx. Special shout-out to my sister-in-government, Chantel Jackson, who led the legislation at the state level. The data outlines in this resolution the disparities that we are all aware of, but we must continue to ring the alarm so that our communities to continue in the suffering from the disparities in maternal health rooted in systematic racism and neglect. The passing of this resolution is to push to have signed the Chisholm Act in law and make it clear that all Black women and birthing people's lives matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, we will now have a voice vote on today's resolutions. If you wish to vote against or abstain from any of today's resolutions, please notify the Legislative Documents Unit by email or by approaching the dais. I'll now read today's resolution into the record. Resolution 133A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign legislation to increase Medicaid reimbursement to cover eight pre- and postnatal visits, as well as delivery support by doulas. Will all those in favor say aye? All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Resolution 293A calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign Senate Bill 2898A with an Assembly Bill 4017A, the Chisholm-Chance Act, which would establish a plan to address the severe maternal morbidity crisis in Brooklyn and the Bronx. Will all those in favor say aye? All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move into general discussion. I'd like to first recognize Councilmember Schulman, followed by Lee then Lewis.
Thank you, Majority Leader. This council has passed a number of bills to help get rid of illegal weed shops, including my legislation to hold landlords liable for knowingly renting to illegal cannabis businesses. However, these illegal businesses and bad actor landlords, or many of them, have been finding ways to circumvent our current laws. So today, I'm introducing Intro 1085 to create a watch list, much like the bad landlords' list put out by the Public Advocates Office. Maybe by publicizing and embarrassing these bad actors, it will have some positive results. I urge my colleagues to please consider signing onto this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, recognizing Councilmember Lee, followed by Lewis then Joseph.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Majority Leader and colleagues. It is my pleasure to introduce legislation today in response to the growing gift card scams targeting our city's older adults. Americans over 60 years old lose approximately $28 billion every year to fraud. This is nationally. Gift cards are one of the most common tactics. Gift cards are sold on racks in pharmacies and supermarkets. For fraudsters, they're better than cash, more portable and just as anonymous. Once criminals have the gift card numbers, they use them to purchase goods online at stores around the world or sell or trade them in illicit marketplaces. Yet, the vast majority of people who fall victim to scams never report it to the law enforcement. Most are too embarrassed or believe they won't get their money back. They're concerned that their caregivers or authorities might take away their autonomy. To make matters worse, police and prosecutors watch and convict very few of the perpetrators, many of whom are operating from overseas and are masters at identifying and manipulating their targets over the phone. Prevention is the best solution and the industry can and should do more. Intro 1078 will prohibit the sale of physical gift cards in New York City that lack chip and PIN technology. This basic security feature is already mandated in credit cards, where it is one of the most effective ways of preventing fraud. In closing, I want to dedicate this to a constituent who is a Marine veteran of the Vietnam War and is 100% disabled. He fell victim to one of these scams and lost thousands of his life savings. We can do more to protect people like him and I hope you'll join me in this effort. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Lewis, followed by Joseph then Ariola.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. As we observe Domestic Violence Awareness Month, it is critical that we acknowledge the deeply pervasive impact of gender-based violence and trauma in our city. I am proud to introduce three pieces of legislation, Intros 1079, 1080 and Reso 599, aimed at addressing critical gaps in support for survivors and protecting the well-being of women across New York City. Intro 1079 would mandate culturally competent training across the Department of Education, Department of Health and Mental Hygiene and the NYPD on recognizing the signs of female genitalia mutilation and cutting. This is a brutal and inhumane practice that continues to harm women and girls globally. Intro 1080 would require the NYPD to retrieve stored sexual offense evidence collection kits, also known as rape kits, within a timely manner, no more than seven days after a survivor consents to release. There are far too many instances where kits languish in storage, depriving survivors of their justice they deserve. This would ensure that the timely retrieval of the critical evidence is readily available. Lastly, Reso 599 calls upon the state legislators to pass legislation regarding the practice of natural hair care and braiding, creating an apprenticeship program to protect and advance protections and opportunities for Black and Brown women statewide and within our city. We cannot allow bureaucratic delays, lack of access and awareness or training to affect our communities. I encourage my colleagues to sign onto these bills to advance equity in our city. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Joseph, followed by Ariola then Carr.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Today, I'm proud to introduce my bill, Intro 1077, alongside my prime co-sponsors, Councilmember Brewer, Ose and Riley. This bill will require ACS to provide luggage for foster care youth when they enter the system, move between placement, exit care, head to college or need for any other reason. As a foster mom, I know firsthand how degrading it was for children to carry their belongings in trash bags. This is unacceptable and New York City must do better. Places like Oregon, Texas, Maryland have already addressed this issue. It's time for New York to follow suit. And we are proud that this bill will just do that. Just want to give you a few examples. It didn't feel like I mattered. It seemed like rushing me was more important than treating me with dignity. The least they could do is give us a proper luggage, 23-year-old foster care. When I moved from group home to group home, my stuff was packed in garbage bags. Sometime, many things got mixed up with trash and throwing out. My belongings were treated as important. They picked what they left, felt like carrying and threw the rest away. Traveling with trash bags became my new normal. Special thanks to Next 100 Team for their work on helping draft this bill, staff members of Heart Share St. Vincent, who took time out of their busy schedule to be present with us at the council for this introduction of the bill, to my staff for their hard work and the bill drafters for their collaboration, and my co-prime sponsors for their support. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Ariola, followed by Carr then Narcisse.
Thank you very much. On March 14, 1891, 11 innocent men were dragged into the streets of New Orleans and brutally murdered before a cheering crowd. One of them, a mentally ill 28-year-old man, was hanged from a lamppost and shot to death, while another was hanged from a nearby tree and riddled with bullets. The other nine were hunted down and executed where they were found. These men had recently been either acquitted, had their trial declared a mistrial, or were not yet tried in a murder case that had gripped the city. Despite the acquittals, mistrials, however, the forces of bigotry and hatred prevailed and these men were murdered, not because of any crimes they were convicted of committing, but because of who they were. And no one knows their names, but they were Bagnetto, Caruso, Comides, Giraci, Macchia, Marchesi, Monasterio, Polisi, Romero, Scafidi and Trania. These men were killed for the crime of being Italian and having vowels at the end of their names. Their murder sent shockwaves throughout the world and shined a bright light on a rampant bigotry that Italian immigrants in the 19th century United States faced on a daily basis. Today, however, these names will not be forgotten. The hardships, the violence, the bigotry faced by Italian immigrants in this country has often been overlooked. However, by introducing Reso 596, who was already signed onto by members of our Italian Caucus, and recognizing March 14 as Innocent 11 Remembrance Day in the city of New York, we can make sure that their legacy lives on. We can make sure that the kind of violence and hatred that claimed these 11 lives is never forgotten and we can create a day in which will serve as a reminder for future generations of the plight of the Italian-Americans when they first came here. I'd like to thank the Legislative Division, Regina Paul, my Chief of Staff, Phyllis Cincirillo, for their hard work in writing this legislation, and my Communications Director, Ray Van, who had the idea for this legislation after hearing the Consulate General of Italy, Fabrizio Di Machelli, tell the story of these innocent men who were brutally murdered. The horrific event was the impetus for then-President Benjamin in 1892.
Councilmember, your time.
To establish the very first Columbus Day. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And I'd like to recognize Councilmember Carr, followed by Narcisse then Caban.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, all. I just want to thank the many folks who helped with our wonderful Italian Heritage Night that was held here in chambers earlier this week, my council colleagues and their respective teams who helped put together the event, and of course, our Speaker, the Speaker's Office, and the wonderful team at Council Events and Productions, who helped to make the evening such a success. We hope to do this again next year. I just want to wish everyone a very happy Columbus Day coming up this weekend and invite all colleagues to march with us in the coming Fifth Avenue Parade on Monday. It's a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of the Italian-American community in New York City and beyond, and the triumph of integration and finding a place in this country over the forces that sought to oppose our forbearers that Councilmember Ariola just referenced in her remarks. And in that spirit, I encourage everyone in this body to sign onto her resolution. Thank you.
Recognizing Councilmember Narcisse, followed by Caban.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and congratulations to all my colleagues and especially Councilmember Farah Lewis, for your hard work in passing this bill, the vitals to our community, the strength of maternal care and brain transparency to maternal mortality information. And we know who are dying in our community, especially the Black and Brown communities. It's about time, so I want to say thank you. Today's legislation is a significant step forward in addressing the stark maternal health disparities that disproportionately attack Black women in our city. But we know this is just the beginning, so thank you, Madam Speaker. As we celebrate the milestone, I urge us all to remain committed to securing the additional resources and funding needed to ensure that every mother, regardless of the race or income, has access to the care they deserve. Together, we can continue working toward a city where all mothers can deliver their babies safely and thrive as they raise the next generation of New Yorkers. Additionally, I would like to ask to my colleagues for the support of Intro 1082, which is being introduced today. This bill will study and report on this and the course requires to start and maintain a small business, with recommendation on how we can reduce those barriers. Small businesses are the backbone of the community. That's what we said. This is the rhetoric. But the Black and Brown communities are losing their business left and right. And we must ensure that entrepreneurs are giving the support they need and deserve to success, especially in today's challenging economic environment is not really welcoming those that have the big dream. So I thank you all.
Recognizing Councilmember Caban.
Thank you. I'm proud to be introducing legislation today, co-sponsored by my colleague, Councilmember Abreu, which would require large buildings in New York City to retrofit their windows with bird-friendly materials. Each year, a billion birds die in the United States due to collisions with buildings. That equates to nearly 30 birds per second losing their lives in such avoidable accidents. New York City is not exempt from this crisis, with an estimated 250,000 birds dying each year within our city limits, and this loss of life is a direct contributor to the biodiversity crisis our planet is experiencing. Local Law 15 of 2020 took a step towards addressing this problem by requiring that newly constructed or altered buildings use bird-friendly materials. But this legislation didn't touch the more than 1 million existing buildings that also pose a significant threat to vulnerable creatures. The recent death of Flaco, a Eurasian eagle owl, highlighted the urgent need to address the issue of birds killed by window collisions in New York City. This bill aims to prevent such tragedies by requiring building owners to install bird-friendly window treatments by 2030. These critical building upgrades will create a substantial number of good union jobs for painters and glazers tasked with replacing existing windows. We will continue to advocate for animal protection and job creation in New York City at the Lights Out Coalition Rally on October 23. I hope you'll sign onto this ledge and join us at the rally, and together we can create good union jobs and make a difference for our city's wildlife. And as a PS, if y'all didn't make it known from my outfit today, today is the first WNBA Finals game for our very own New York Liberty. Go Liberty!
New York City is not exempt from this crisis, with an estimated 250,000 birds dying each year within our city limits, and this loss of life is a direct contributor to the biodiversity crisis our planet is experiencing. Local Law 15 of 2020 took a step towards addressing this problem by requiring that newly constructed or altered buildings use bird-friendly materials. But this legislation didn't touch the more than 1 million existing buildings that also pose a significant threat to vulnerable creatures. The recent death of Flaco, a Eurasian eagle owl, highlighted the urgent need to address the issue of birds killed by window collisions in New York City. This bill aims to prevent such tragedies by requiring building owners to install bird-friendly window treatments by 2030. These critical building upgrades will create a substantial number of good union jobs for painters and glazers tasked with replacing existing windows. We will continue to advocate for animal protection and job creation in New York City at the Lights Out Coalition Rally on October 23. I hope you'll sign onto this ledge and join us at the rally, and together, we can create good union jobs and make a difference for our city's wildlife. And as a PS, if y'all didn't make it known from my outfit today, today is the first WNBA Finals game for our very own New York Liberty. Go Liberty! And I am calling it right now. Leoni Phibis is going to have a monster game. So, go Liberty.
Thank you, Councilmember Caban. Seeing no one else signed up to speak, can we have silence in the chambers? I'll now call on Speaker Adrian Adams to close today's stated meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Majority Leader. Before we do, I do want to recognize those young adults who are here, who are in support of Intro 1077 today. I want to call out my fair futures daughter, Cheyenne, dear princess. She's so little. I don't know, 10, 10, 10? Okay. We wanted to shout them out. We wanted to shout them out. Madam Majority Leader and colleagues, the stated reading of October 10, 2024 is hereby adjourned.
Folks wearing pink, if you want to come to the front of the room and take...